Welcome to the thirty ninth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please turn off your cell phones completely. And when addressing the commission, please remember to state and spell your name clearly and to speak into the microphone. And we have minutes to approve. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the twenty ninth meeting dated February twentieth, twenty twenty five.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the twenty ninth meeting of two. Two twenty 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 five. Any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye. The motion is carried. Calling agenda item number one, application number two four dash zero one six three three. From Awahu Drinks Inc. Doing business as Awahu Drinks Inc. Hello.
Jason Hayes, President of Awahu Drinks here.
Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application was originally scheduled for public hearing on March sixth, twenty twenty five, which proceeding was canceled to address issues in the application. This application has, you see, zero written protests, zero letters in support, applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this applicant? Seeing none, Commissioners, questions?
No questions.
Nope. We bet this up pretty good.
Uh huh.
Yep. Motion to approve application number two four dash zero one six three three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two four dash zero one six three three. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye. The application is approved. Congratulations on a long. Okay, calling agenda item number two, application number two four dash zero two three five one from Ichika LLC DBA Temkura Ichika. Hello.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners, Robin Melchon being half of the applicant and the authorized agent. We have reviewed the report and there are no amendments or changes.
Okay, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application, as you see, is zero written protests, zero letters in support, applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the March sixth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Hune prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone who'd like to testify for or against this applicant? I see none. Commissioners, questions?
None.
Motion to approve application number two four dash zero two three five one.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two four dash zero two three five one. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye. The application is approved.
Thank you.
And calling agenda item number three, application number two five dash zero one five nine four from MDH Holdings LLC DBA Kuhio Corner.
Good afternoon, Chair Hong. That was at the Honolulu Liquor Commission. James H. Lee, representing applicant MDH Holdings LLC. With me today is Mr. Justin Alexander, managing member of MDH Holdings.
Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support, applicants with statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the March sixth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Hune prior to the public hearing.
Okay, is there anyone in the, yes.
I need somebody to oppose it.
I almost, let me get the words out. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to testify for or against this applicant? Okay, so I, I have three people listed. Mr. Joseph Silva. All right, please step forward.
And I'm gonna run a three minute timer on these.
Ready? Just sit down over here.
Okay, I'm gonna have to swear you in once you are seated. You swear the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Okay, please go ahead.
Well, just need to say.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, state your name.
Joseph Silva.
And spell your last name.
S I L B A. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the area, it's, I've seen it improve over the years. Members in the community in the area.
Could you speak a little?
Yeah, sorry. Sorry. The area has improved over time. The, it's got nicer. They put lights to bring it. You can see just the overall environment in the, that community and the what that establishment is trying to do. It's been trying to improve and make the area better overall. I believe that I don't see them having issues from what I can tell of being loud or disrespectful or anything of that nature. Five for the that to add to the community and growing those businesses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, questions?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling Mr. Doug W. Something. Okay, come on.
Doctor handwriting here.
Please, go ahead. I'll send you names for the record and spell it.
It's ringing the Rory. R O R Y. Last name is C U C C I N I E L L O.
I'm gonna go ahead and swear you in.
Oh.
Do you swear the testimony you gave today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Thank you.
Oh. Okay, I'm a little nervous, so.
It's okay, it's just.
I'm here today to share my support for the application for a license to serve alcohol at two O A Kapuni Street submitted by MDH Holdings. As a member of the local community, for many years now, I live across the street from this, the establishment. Um, I understand and share some of the same concerns as do other neighbors about how this, businesses continue to develop around my commu- our community. That being said, I have seen the continued development of the corner be consistently guided with a strong sense of community pride and respect towards the people who live in our surrounding neighborhood. Uh, you on the committee are presented with a worthy choice today to consider adding more than just a liquor license, but you will now be a part of our continued success of this local shared experience as well. Uh, please consider when moving forward with this issue, the fact that the location and the existing establishments have never had any noise complaints of any kind. Also important to note is the outstanding professional character of the property owner, Justin, and how Justin has always shown effective communication, personal integrity, and while maintaining the property over the years. I say this because this request for a license should be met with your enthusiastic approval. I say this wholeheartedly because I've seen the space at two O A Kapuni Street continue to prosper in the recent years, and I've witnessed the transformation that's taken place in a once really lighted and neglected Waikiki corner. Um, the continued positive change at two A Kapuni Street is a result of hard work and dedication of a group of people who show up every day and really do care. Uh, small business, especially here in Hawaii, have real power to change the people, places, and things that they serve for the greater good. So when approving this license, you will signal your support for the small businesses of Hawaii. And I, mahalo, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you.
Very much. And calling, uh, Ruth Ara-kaki.
Ara-kaki.
Please, have a seat.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Oh, I'm back. I can go ahead and swear you in. Do you swear the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we receive, we submitted.
You state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Ruth Ara-kaki. My last name is A R A K A K I. Um, I want to read a letter that we submitted April the twenty fifth. And, um, it was in opposition for this liquor commission, for this liquor license. Um, it's Kapuni Development, uh, wrote this letter. Kapuni Development is the owner of Kohio Eptide. It's a sixty-three unit residential apartment complex at the corner of Kohio and Kapuni Street is located less than five hundred feet from the site of the proposed Kohio Corner. Uh, because many of its residents work in Waikiki retail establishments, restaurants, and hotels. Their schedules vary greatly. An open air bar would be inappropriate for any day or nighttime. The site is surrounded by apartments. It's very densely populated area. The residence requires sleep, relaxation, in order to work and lead productive lives. Furthermore, the liquors encourage loitering, loitering and negative behavior in the adjacent private common area. Therefore, we're against the liquor license of MDH Holding LLC. Um, the, we had received everybody in the apartment unit. So I have sixty signed people from building A, B, and C. They all signed this paper. The sixty, there's about sixty units, sixty signatures on this paper, and I submitted it April twenty fifth. Did you receive this?
We did.
Yes, we did.
We did our package.
Okay, so, um, I thought, and I guess I misunderstood, I thought there was no opposition to this liquor commission, to this liquor license. Was that true, or did I just hear you guys?
That is probably my fault, because I did.
Oh, you did say no.
Because I, I know there's opposition, and there's a lot of people that didn't want this liquor license to happen. So I, you know, you guys have the record, right, that it did, that there was an opposition for this project?
And I, I believe it was your piece with a long list of names.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just want to make that attention to you. You know, that you guys do. You know, like that.
Say.
Yeah.
No letter.
That people did oppose it.
No.
Somebody was supposed to go out there and actually, um, investigate the property and all this, you know, what was gonna go on. So I'm just wondering if somebody did or didn't do that.
We have an investigative report. We had an investigator go out there, and that's actually what we're reviewing.
It's being reviewed?
Yeah. This hearing is.
Yeah, if I could go ahead and correct my earlier statement with respect to the application record. Um, uh, because I no longer sign, sign off on these. That's not an excuse, but in terms of this application, uh, written protests, uh, submitted, uh, numbered sixty-two, letters of support, twenty, valid protests from owners and lessees, um, total three or less than one percent. Valid protests from registered voters, twenty-two, three percent. So those are the stats in terms of the uh, submitted protests. So I apologize for my earlier misstatement.
Yeah. And those are important because it, you can override a, a ruling of the liquor commission, I believe, with, uh, a significant number of voters in the area, um, voting in, in opposition. That's why we have a number stamp.
So when we determine, when we decide, um, whether the liquor, the liquor license is gonna have.
Right now.
Okay, well, that's all I needed to say. There was an opposition, and there was a letter, and that it was submitted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
No questions. Other?
Yes.
People testifying.
Are there any other people that would like to testify? Okay, seeing none, Commissioners, questions?
So I guess I do have some questions. You, you've heard your testifiers, or you've heard the individuals that have testified in protest. And, um, sixty-two, I mean, a letter with sixty-two people signing, right? Within that area. And so I think part of it is based on being an outdoor bar, being outdoor noise, outdoor things of that nature. So for me, what is your current, going to be your current, um, hours of operation Monday through Friday and on the weekends?
Yeah, so, um, currently, the hours of operation, coffee shop will still open at seven, but alcohol will be served from eleven until nine. And we think nine would be an appropriate time to close early. I did reach out to the complacent, um, the owner of the building um, to see if we could work something out, but, um, he just, there was no opportunity to work out, changing of the schedule, or, or we couldn't come to an agreement. So I, what I want to say is, again, this is not a bar. It's a restaurant. And that is our intention, and we're okay with committing to close early, because what we really want is to be able to sell beer and wine to tourists and people that, that locals that come through. Um, we don't, we want to close early. We don't want a rowdy crowd. Um, we just have had a lot of different guests who have come through and have left because they did want to go somewhere where they could buy a beer with their meal. And so, again, we're, we want to work with the community. I really want to try to reach out to the neighbors. We want to put a, a decimal meter, because we know if you go over eighty-five D V L, it could be a violation. So we want to, we can put in a meter, work with the community. I was down at D P P today. We don't have any noise violations, no issues over the last, since two thousand and eighteen, when we were granted the conditional use permit to open commercial. So we've been a staple in the community. We've provided a lot of services and, you know, we want to do our best to mitigate that.
Okay, so, so currently you're saying nine o'clock. Is that Monday through Thursday, or, and on the weekends, do you plan to stay open later?
No, that's, that's.
Till nine?
No, nine.
All the days?
All the days, yeah.
And I guess.
And just to let you know, I'm sorry to cut you off.
No.
That, that in the Kohio slows down anyways. Normally around eight thirty-nine is when we, we shut down.
Okay. And then I guess the question would be, right, obviously, with closing down at nine, um, before your, before your staff leaves, you're willing to check the area to make sure there's nobody loitering or hanging out or being within that area?
No, absolutely. It's been a constant struggle. So when we initially purchased this property, it was very rundown. That area of clay corn does have a notorious, the old jungle of Waikiki. So we, we really, and we want to keep people out anyways and keep it clean and keep the streets organized and we even have a, I work, we work with Hawaii Tel, where we have authorization to call the police if there's someone on their side of the property. And so we, it's our intent to keep it clean and
Yeah.
our patrons and clientele that come through aren't the loitering type. They're, they're locals, tourists, families.
Yeah. And then if I was reading through the application, you're not really playing, um, like having bands or playing, you might be playing.
We, we gave up all music. We're not gonna have any music to try to appease the community.
Okay. So the thing I would suggest is I would say that because there has been concerns about sound and things like that, you might want to have or print out a log sheet that will have a date, what time someone called, who called, and what, if you are putting a decibel meter out there, reader out there, maybe list what decimals you have, just in case people do have some concerns or issues, you have something to show.
Absolutely.
Provoking those things.
Agreed.
Have you received any small complaint?
About, for the application?
For the noise.
No, 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 it's there. That's why I was down at D P P. There are no complaints in the system. As far as I know, we have no complaints of, you know, police reports, that there's nothing like that, that I know of since we've been in operation.
So no law enforcement approaching you and telling, telling you.
No, no, no. We've called the police a lot, but that's just to get either homeless or loiters or people that are on the property, you know, to get them to move on. But for us, we have no reports, not that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you.
I have no.
Yeah, okay. No, it, it sounds like you're taking careful care, Mr. Alexander, about being mindful for the community. I'm, I'm supportive, and I'm gonna make the recommendation to approve the application. So I can make a motion to approve application number two three dash zero one five nine four.
Oh, hold it.
Wait, I don't think it's.
The numbering is.
So I think it's two five, you want zero one five nine four.
And notes are wrong here.
No, sorry.
Same for two five.
I have two five.
Yeah, two five one here. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
All right, correction for the record, motion to approve application number two five dash zero one five nine four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero one five nine four. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye. The application is approved.
Good luck. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number four, application number two five dash zero one nine six three from Your Event Solutions LLC, DBA Your Event Solutions.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
Troy Grevat, T R O Y G R A V A T.
Brett, do you want to just kind of walk us through the, the event at M W?
It's M W. It's Rosee Swaree. So it's a yearly event, uh, hosted by Honolulu Magazine. Yeah. Um, tickets are gonna be sold. Um, people are gonna come in for the event, spending time at the, uh, at the Velocity.
Oh.
Building, um, is where it's gonna be located. There'll be two bars. They're located within, according to the, the plan that I put out. It's a general, um, application.
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero one nine six three.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero one nine six three. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye. The application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number five, application number two five dash zero one nine seven zero. Events International.
Please.
Stay there for the record, so I will go.
Rich Schneider for Events International.
Uh, and I would like to disclose that, uh, the applicant and myself serve on a nonprofit board together, but this will not uh, interfere with my ability to make a judgment in this matter. Hey. You want to walk us through your event?
Um, yes, this event is smoked. Um, it's a whiskey and cigar event. Um, max capacity, two hundred persons. It's at Monolou Gardens, uh, in a small controlled area within the entire space, which is much larger. We're expecting, uh, demographics, probably thirty years and older, mostly men.
Is this the first time you guys are doing it at Monolou Gardens?
Yeah, we did it at, um, in Wa- at Waikiki last year.
Oh, yeah. I was thinking they did it once during Pearl, I think, but it might not have been you guys running whiskey and surprises. But I mean, it happens all over. Yeah, it happens different places. I just wasn't, I didn't see it at Monolou Gardens before. Okay, that's my only question.
Out of questions.
No.
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero one nine seven zero.
Second. So moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero one nine seven zero. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye. The application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number six, application number two five dash zero one nine five nine from Zetan ADBA Zigu Restaurants.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Kenneth O'Appire for the applicant. To my right is Makoto, M A K O T O, Asigawa, H A S E G A W A, president of the applicant. This is a application for catering. Uh, it's already, there is a catering license already issued for the, for this premises. Um, it's issued to Zetan, same entity, uh, Aloa Table. But because of some changes in the operation of Aloa Table, we gotta change the caterer. So we're changing it to Zigu, also a Zetan, uh, license. And, um, the premises are the same, except I, I take that back. The premises are being enlarged slightly. Um, and we are, that's shown on the supplemental report, uh, which, uh, Mr. Sato has graciously prepared in a timely fashion, and we thank you for that. We've been doing this catering now at that location since January of issue. No, no issues.
Motion to approve application number two five dash zero one nine five nine.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero one nine five nine. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye. The application is approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
No, it's a key number seven.
Number seven.
Yes, not number two. So I like that number. That was number seven.
Number seven.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Okay.
I was having, like, this has been quite a week. Sorry.
On the agenda item number seven, application number two five dash zero two zero four two from Seventeen A Productions, DBA Skull and Brown. Hello.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Angelina Conca, H A N, member of.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Angelina Khan K H A N, member of Seventeen A Productions.
Hi. This is just. Continuing to cater in your space.
Yes.
Got it.
I have one question.
Motion to approve application number two, five dash zero, two. Zero, four, two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, five dash zero, two, zero, four, two. Any needs or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number eight, request number two, four dash zero, zero, two, zero, seven from Iron Gate. A Z Rep, B W L L C. Please correct me if I. Put your, your, uh, names.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Commission, Ms. Anna Harai, Naomi Cole, on behalf of the applicant, Iron Gate, Azra B W L L C. Um, present to my right is Mr. Rand, R A N D Mulvey, M U L V E Y. This is, uh, the prior Trump Tower location now called Cali Waikiki Beach. Um, we are requesting basically change in ownership. The ownership change was because there was just a minor ownership that, the minor owner shareholder that needed to be added. But it didn't change the control of the company. Um, so because of that, they, you know, failed to notify the commission on time. The change was effective in twenty twenty-two. And they noticed that they didn't change it when they got the renewal packet and then we submitted it right after we got the renewal packet. So that's essentially what happened there. We have no collections to the report.
Well, sure, I, I usually will always ask my normal question because obviously there's other things that'll happen later, but. So currently, everybody on record that we have at the administration is correct and who's there.
Yes, it's correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Nope, I don't.
Motion to approve request number two, four dash zero, zero, two, zero, seven.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve request number two, four dash zero, zero, two, zero, seven. Any needs or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye. The request is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number nine, request number two, four dash zero, one, six, one, six from D F S Group.
Uh, with respect to agenda item nine, no, uh, commission action is required. This matter has been approved administratively, no action.
Awesome. On the agenda item number ten, request number two, five dash zero, two, one, three, eight from Shaka's Eight O Eight.
Good afternoon, Chairman of the Commissions. First, we show the authorization appearing. We have the applicant to my right is Will. Will W E L L Crivello. C R I V E L L O, he's a officer with the, with the company. All the other business team. Investigate, I mean, license supervisor, something, but what, there are no changes there.
I have none.
Yep. Motion to approve request number two, five dash zero, two, one, three.
Second.
So then moved and seconded to approve request number two, five dash zero, two, one, three, eight. Any needs or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the request is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eleven, request number two, five dash zero, two, zero, six, zero from Wayne Luke on behalf of Allah Allah.
Good afternoon. We have the record, it's like Wayne Luke for the requestor. Um, there are no changes to the eleven. Okay. So, Mr. Luke, Beach House, they didn't renew for the twenty-four to twenty-five year rate, so they were in twenty twenty-four not. Um, operating or serving liquor, correct?
That was a year, yeah, that was.
Right, I have another question.
Motion to approve request number two, five dash zero, two, zero, six, zero.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve request number two, five dash zero, two, zero, six, zero. Any needs or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the request is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you think any basis for adjudication? Dive right in. Alright, calling agenda item number twelve. Ready? Uh. Seven eleven stores, number five, four, two, six, five, L C G, two, four, dash, zero, zero, seven, nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission Members, Kenneth, who are appearing for the licensee. At, at this time, we go.
Oh, sorry, soon, if we can let, um, corporation also make their, um, entrance to.
I didn't want to give him a chance to say anything.
Thank you.
Hey, um, good afternoon, Commissioners, this is Deputy Corporation Counsel Nicholas Lee, on my behalf of the City Council.
Okay, Mr. Who?
Oh, okay, alright, thank you. Uh, we are prepared to waive reading of the charge. And enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea. Second.
Been moved and seconded to, uh, accept the plea of no contest and it is a reservation seeing none. Also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Lee, your recommendation for agenda item number twelve?
Um. We recommend the fine of five hundred dollars as there's no similar violations within the last five years.
Okay, Mr. Who? Explanations?
First, let me apologize for, um. My client not being physically present, but I am the authorization. The, uh, you personally usually comes, got a seven keys of brand cards. Uh, this is a violation for. Failure to display prices on a retail premises. What happened was the clerk was posting the prices. Uh, it got busy. And he didn't finish the job.
Yeah.
He's been told. You gotta do it, you gotta do it.
Almost, y- you almost want to tell them, right, that even if you get busy, don't take anything off. Unless you put, right, at the same time, right?
Yeah, but sometimes.
Sales, right, sales, they change sales, change items, right?
Right.
Alright. Okay. Uh, my recommendation is going to be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number twelve. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve a fine of five hundred dollars. Any needs or reservations seeing none? The fine is assessed.
Thank you.
Right. Uh, calling agenda item number thirteen, Champ Hawaii Sports Bar and Restaurant, L C B, two, four, dash, zero, one, zero, three.
Um, good afternoon, Commissioners, um, Deputy Corporation Counsel Nicholas Lee on behalf of the City Council. Um, I. Did want to inform, um, the Commissioners that, um, one of my colleagues, Ms. Warrington, received an email from Mr. Kiuchi. For this matter, he's on the mainland, he's requesting to continue, um. The adjudication hearing to the next available date.
Are you agreeable to such requests?
Uh, we are.
Okay. Think we'll put it for the next available, thank you.
Calling agenda item number fourteen, Island Express Mini Mark, L C B, two, four, dash, zero, one, zero, two.
Hello, everyone. I'm Young Sam Chu, Y O U N G, S A M, C H U, I'm the VP.
Good afternoon. Okay, you don't have to, um, you don't need to record it going all the time, but, so, Mr. Lee, can you please read the charges?
Um. Honorable November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, in the city of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, retail licensee. Failed to have a duly registered manager, assistant manager assigned to the licensed premises. In violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point nine, subsection A, subsection two of the rules of the Liquor Commission. The city in California.
Mr. Chu, how would you like to plead? You can accept the charge, deny the charge, or?
I mean, it, it, it is my fault, my mistake. Well, I got hurt a little bit, so I also.
Okay, so, you, you'll have some time, okay, so. So again, I did, you did, so you accept the charge, okay? Motion to accept the plea. Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the plea of accepting the charge. Uh, any needs or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Lee, what is your recommendation for agenda item number fourteen?
Um. Vice Chair, our recommendation would be a fine of five hundred dollars, just noting, um, for the Commissioners that. A prior warning was issued, um, to this entity on October third, twenty twenty-four for the same offense.
Hold on, so, Mr. Chu, what happened?
What happened was. I'm the one that got the license.
Okay.
I got hurt.
Okay.
Time, so I have a two managers.
Okay.
I, I thought, I thought they wasn't going to do it. But they didn't do it, and I didn't know about it. For a while. So now, or I already went into the, I got updated, I got my. Everything is back normal, so I do accept my mistake and I do accept what I need to do.
Okay, great. So the thing, so just so we understand, right?
Yes.
You, you, you had two managers with you, right? But when you were not there, one, neither one of them were there?
No, they were there, but they supposed to go to the internet.
They didn't have a car.
Yeah.
Okay, 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 okay.
So I did it right away as soon as I got the letter, but it was my mistake, it's my job to make sure everybody, my, my.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what happened.
Yes.
Before I make a motion. So I would like to say thank you for, you know, making sure they have it, but I do think. It, for future, right, you need to check with them going forward, just to make sure it's always up to date and they always have it with them, okay? And because there was a prior warning, because there was a date that they said that they came and told you on October, they came and told maybe your managers when you were not there. Prior that, that they came, right, so. If I rec- recollect correctly, Mr. Lee, they said that there was a prior warning on October third, twenty twenty-four?
Um. That's right, Mr. Vice Chair, um, on the report of the Liquor Control Investigator, Thomas Dobbin, he states the premises has a prior warning on. Under the same rule.
So maybe you weren't there and they might have came and told your managers who has a card. And no one had one, but they didn't tell you. Cause it seems like someone came before, okay? Yeah, so I am going to make a recommendation to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Because we always need to have a registered manager in. Coverage of the place that's selling alcohol, okay? That's my motion.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded to assess a fine of five hundred dollars. Any needs or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number sixteen, oh. Fifteen, Jungle Juice Market LLC, L C B, two, four, dash, zero, one, zero, one.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Minya Wu, um, P H O. Um, Jungle Juice Market LLC and also Transferry Darwin LLC. By, by, it's the, uh, manager, Su Ming Kim.
Would you like to waive reading of the?
Yeah, do you waive, waive reading of the charge?
Yes, I would like to waive, yeah, reading of the charge.
Would you like to enter a plea?
Yes, it will be no contest.
Okay. Motion to accept the plea, second.
Been moved and seconded to, uh, accept the plea of no contest. Any needs or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Lee, what is your recommendation for agenda item number fifteen?
Uh, I recommend the fine, Mr. Vice Chair, is for five hundred dollars, noting that, um. There, there were no similar violations within the last five years, however, there were two other warnings issued for. Different offenses in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-three.
Miss Wu. Explanations, what happened?
Yes, so, um, this alteration was made without the, um, the prior written approval. Was due to, uh, misunderstanding of the proper process, uh, procedure of the new transferring. Um, upon realizing the oversight, the manager came promptly filed a necessary filing, so. The date that we got the notice was the, um, I believe August fifth. And next day. Now, we started to working on it and same week we filed the alteration. And now we deeply apologize for the situation and now we have a correct understanding about the procedure.
Okay. So. Then, so, so basically. Your, um, current licensee took over or was transferred the operation. And was the alterations made prior to them getting it or during the process?
Um. Technically, it was prior to getting it. And, um. Because the, uh, previous licensee has a, a very bad illness that is almost not operatable.
Okay.
So, so the manager was helping. With the, uh, operation and also on the training at the time.
Okay.
Are the plans that you have registered with us now all up to date?
Yes. We also have approved it.
Okay. Okay. So, Miss Wu. Um, I'm gonna make a motion, but I am going to make a motion for some type of an amount, because even though you're transferring and you're getting it, right? You need to make sure when you're getting it, when you submit the transfer portions, everything is correct. So that we don't have, you, neither one of us, you or your client or us have to go back and forth figuring out the plans, okay?
Yeah.
So I am going to make a motion. To a, approve a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number fifteen. Thank you.
Been moved and seconded, uh, to assess a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars. Any needs or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Miss Wu.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number sixteen, Manoa Market. Manoa Mart in L C B, two, four, dash, zero, zero, nine, seven.
It's meant a record, it's like Wayne Luke, his attorney for the licensee, we waive reading of charges and to plead no contest.
Motion to accept the plea. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve, uh, accept the plea of no contest. Any needs or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Lee, your recommendation for agenda item number sixteen, please?
Um. Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, recommended fines for five hundred dollars, just noting for, uh, the Commissioners. That a prior warning was issued on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four for the same offense.
Okay, Mr. Luke, what happened?
We have no excuse. The person who was warned, uh, didn't contact the person that should be doing it, so. We, we have no defenses.
Okay. So I would say just remind your, um, client that, you know. Make sure that people, they got their, got manager, uh, cards available already, just in case people come, okay?
Sure.
Okay, my motion is going to be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number sixteen. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve a fine of five hundred dollars. Any needs or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seventeen, New Green Tea, L C B, two, four, dash, zero, zero, nine, three.
If he's not here.
In there.
Um, good afternoon, Commissioners, Deputy Corporation Counsel Nicholas Lee for the city. Um, as with, uh, number thirteen, number seventeen is being represented by Mr. Kiuchi, contacted Ms. Warrington for today's, um, hearings. Um, he's asking to continue this matter to the next available date.
And you, you're agreeable to that.
We're agreeable to that.
Okay.
Calling agenda item number eighteen, New Hong. J Yakineku Inc., L C C, two, five, dash, zero, zero, one, six.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Minya Wu. On behalf of New Hongje Yakineku Inc. On my right is the president, Yon Ok, Mori Yama.
Miss Wu, do you waive reading of the charge?
Yes, I waive the reading of the charge.
Would you like to enter a plea?
No contest.
Motion to accept the plea. Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the plea of no contest. Any needs or reservations seeing none? I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Lee, your recommendation for agenda item number eighteen?
Uh, Mr. Vice Chair recommended fine of five hundred dollars, noting no prior, um, uh, citations issued for the same offense.
Miss Wu. Explanations for what happened?
So, um, unfortunately, it, um. My client didn't really recall receiving the notice.
Okay.
And, um, she only realized after that she has the citation. And the following morning, which is, uh, January tenth, she filed the, uh. Uh, annual employee listing. But, um. Also, she, uh, essentially regret that oversight and, uh. Also recognize the importance of timely. Compliance with all regulatory requirement. Um. She also deep the value, the commission's standards and remain, uh, committed to improving. The internal process to prevent any future occurrences.
If he has a dinner calendar for this year?
Yes, she do.
How long has she had the license? How long has she had the license?
Um, two, two years.
And she submitted the first one in a timely fashion before? And she submitted the first one in a timely fashion before?
Um, I believe she did it on time. Because it's first time it happened, but. She really just uh um didn't remember receiving the notice. But also she could actually uh follow up with the liquor commission, but she was so busy. And just missed the uh deadline.
Hmm. Okay, so Miss Wu, just remind your client that they might want to put a few um. Alerts or reminders within their calendar. Couple of days before it is due, just so we remember, because it is going to be a, you know, a costly thing based on the fact that. She did it prior and she's had some knowledge of knowing when it was due, okay?
Yes.
So my motion is going to be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number eighteen, second.
Been moved and seconded to uh assess a five hundred dollar penalty, any names or reservations seen none, I also vote I the motion carries. Thank you. Calling agenda item number nineteen, the GoTo Mini Mart, L C B two five dash zero zero one seven.
Joining for Kim on the. Owner of.
Hold on, Miss Kim. Uh, Mr. Lee, can you please read the charge for agenda item number nineteen?
Um, yes, Mr. Vice Chair, um, honor about January eleven, twenty twenty five, in the city of Kaniha Funalulu. State of Hawaii licensee failed to have a duly registered manager. In active charge of the licensed premises during the time the establishment is licensed to sell or serve liquor in violation of rule. Three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point nine subsection A of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City of Kaniha Funalulu.
Miss Kim. You can either accept the charge, deny the charge, or plead no contest.
Um, well, I'm sorry that happened, but actually uh the manager is my son.
Okay, so Miss, Miss Kim. You have to make a plea before we can hear any um. What happened or anything like that, so you, again, you can either accept the charge.
Yes.
Okay, okay, so I need a um se- second, sorry. Motion to accept the charge.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the charges, uh any names or reservations seen none, I also vote I the plea is accepted.
Yeah, hold on, Miss Kim, so we're gonna get him to let us know what the by, other. If he could give, uh, Mr. Lee, could you please provide us a recommendation for agenda item number nineteen?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, um, recommended fines for five hundred dollars, though we note for um the commission. That this entity was warned um one month earlier for the same, exact same offense on December third, twenty twenty four.
Okay, so Miss Kim. What happened, what?
Well. Uh, this is family running business.
Okay.
Like my dad, so uh my husband had a cancer, so we have to be a caregiver. Daytime and he was at nighttime step. Actually, he got this uh notice, but he forgot.
Okay.
So we all got sick, he was in emergency a few times and he was giving caregiver. So totally, this is our mistake, but you know. Will accept the charge, but can you just uh? Penalty, I think that's too high, it's just small business.
Okay.
Okay, five hundred dollar.
Okay, so Miss Kim. You're, you and your son both have cards currently now.
He has card, right?
Yes, card, okay. And he's in charge of the, he's running the business, or he's in charge of the space? All the time, or are you in charge of the space sometimes?
Cannot hire somebody, so I work in the morning and he work at.
Okay, and so you have your card too, correct?
I don't have card.
Okay, so. Okay, so.
To have a card.
Huh?
Do I have to have a card?
So if you're the only person working. And he's not there, you would probably be safe to get a card. But we are going to be checking um. Go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah, we.
Yes.
We tell me, okay, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Someone assigned to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, no, no, we're just checking, cause each place has some different, different requirements, okay, okay. So this is what I'm going to say. Um, this is what I'm going to do. I am going to. Approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, but I am going to. Say what we will not collect this five hundred dollars. Except if your establishment receives another violation of the same nature. That five hundred dollars plus whatever extra or whatever other amount would become collectible. Okay?
Thank you.
So that's going to be my motion, second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept uh to assess a fine of five hundred dollars with uh. Delayed uh deferred uh collection as stated. Uh, any names or reservations seen none, I also vote I the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Calling agenda item number twenty, the turn at Stella's Restaurant and Bar, L C B two four dash zero one zero zero.
And Chair, members of the commission, uh, Greg and Chuck are making a special appearance on behalf of licensee, um. Request this matter be continued the next available. If possible, um, just some background, I just noticed this violation looking in the calendar today, so I reached out to her. The owner, um, we handled her liquor license. And I told her, you know, are you aware that, you have hearing coming, and she, you know, completely slipped her mind. And she hadn't advised counsel either of it, she does have counsel, so she wants to talk to counsel and see. Yes, I'll proceed for it. In addressing this, these violations, so we just requested it. You know, we move to explain it if possible. Okay.
Is court counsel agreeable to the recommendation?
Yes, we have, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, so we'll move number twenty to the next of these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, please.
Okay, then the item number twenty-one, are you okay?
Yeah.
All right, I'll go.
Sure.
Short recess.
We're back from the SASS. Item number twenty one, the commission discussions of processes and procedures. Legislation and so for today's discussion. That's the end of session is upon us. I wanted to. Open us up for discussion of some of the pieces of legislation that look like they'll affect us. And as we go through this. Kind of the process and procedures for when the commission itself should. Way in or choose to weigh in on any legislation so that we're just kind of clear on that. I want this to be an open discussion here, although I would. Ask court counsel when we. Discuss items if you feel like we should be an executive session to please indicate so then. We want to executive session, but otherwise. It just be just in open session. Alright, so. So you you come to the front and I guess maybe we can discuss some of the bills that came out and some of their. Potential. Of excellence.
I think for my perspective, Commissioner, the one thing that I think affects us in terms of the meetings. And I need to confirm with the administrative right this past. But there was one bill that was going through the legislature. And seem to be doing pretty well, and that is the. Requirement that the board packets essentially. Be frozen by two days prior to. So in terms of what we do here. I think that because incumbent upon us make sure that we provide the necessary. Supplementary information like for example, my presentation last week. Two days prior to the the meeting. I think that's the that's the thing that that would certainly would have great impact the way we feel in.
So your understanding is that. We cannot take a submission if it's not in the pack at two days.
Yes.
Do you know the prompted prompted that building, what the intent was?
I I don't know. I don't know what prompted that bill, but I presume it's 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 a sense of again. The legislature is very protective of transparency. And to the extent that the the. The submissions coming late, then it's it's less likely that people will be able to see.
Often does that happen for us?
Kind of a lot that we.
That's a lot for me. So, but but I have a question then. So is that also then saying, for instance, we have a public hearing? And protest letters or protest stuff comes the day of those is I mean, those cannot be part of that. And it cannot be reported as part of the packet, or does that then mean that? On public hearing ends up getting pushed back because that protest wasn't on there.
I think that's something I'm gonna we're gonna have to find out like that. Would handle something like that for sure.
Because I think if it's our own product within the administration, we have to work to figure out. If it's needs to be that, then we gotta be enough time ahead.
And if only you did that sense and not so much when you have the last minute protests, so so.
That'll be different, right? You can't submit something, but you can come up and speak.
Right, but what but what I'm saying is technically though, right? Protesting in person, right, is if it's one person, so like today's ladies came up and protested.
Right.
But she's talking about a letter that was signed by sixty three people. She can't actually speak for all sixty three people if it doesn't actually get into the packet.
I get it.
Right. So I'm just saying, I I'm just concerned in regards to those things, how that pushes back. Public hearings and things like that when we already. Have a showcase, you know, I mean, like I. We're already having challenges getting them through the system anyway. Right. And so I'm just, I I would suggest we need to. Have a little bit of a discussion with Corporation Council and things like that to find out what that means for those areas.
Well, so right now, there there's some leeway, right? But there's no excuse for even to not to put in return.
Yeah.
Prior, but yeah, we test only there's some leeway, but I don't have it within the rules. So I would anticipate that if they don't allow for any testimony to come in the day of, I don't know if one. I would expect some delays. Either keeping public tests, public hearings open. So that you allow it, and then it's a slippery slope, right? What if you get a testimony every single time?
Yeah, yeah.
Late suspicions or someone, it'll just keep.
Yeah.
But. Cat is a more administrative, like you would have the chance to see if this testimony that's being repeated be sent in, right? So.
Okay.
I I have to look at what the new requirements are, but. We do take into account the testimony and generally it is allowed because you're allowed same age as well. Hmm. I think other materials.
Right, okay.
Okay, help me understand the context. Is was this a bill at the ledge or is this?
Ledge, yes.
Was that the ledge? So it was a what Senate bill, House bill, joint?
I think it was a house ball. I didn't. I mean, I was gonna just speak to what we what was brought up at the. Symposium yesterday, but I mean, this is as soon as be. I think this one has already been transmitted to the governor. So how's Bill?
So it passed.
Well, he can. I mean, there's.
He can veto, right, but not sign.
He has not signed off on it yet.
But apparently ledge forwarded up.
Yeah, it's made it pretty far.
Yeah. Now I say like every single year for the past. Handful of years, we've had things impacting public meetings. In terms of the content of the fourth packet. When it's posted, I mean, it's literally the past. Three to five years, every single year, there's a substantial number of bills that are very specific to the public meeting, so.
Okay, so I I'm trying to figure if this is a Honolulu centric type bill or. Because other colonies have issues too, and. Who the heck submitted it? Maybe they had a problem with. Big Island, you know, Hawaii colony.
I think, Commissioner, regardless of whether or not which kind of they had a problem with or an issue with. Fact of the matter is that the law will apply to all of us unless there's that. But I've always known five hundred person, and I I don't know if this language.
Right. So the bill tracking table will show who the bill introduces.
What was the bill number?
Um, I do not have that with me, but what I'll do is as soon as we get out of here. I'll rerun the 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 bill tracking table, which contains not just the the licensee bills, but. The ones that impact us and we can take a look at that. We just haven't.
Curious to know. Like to.
Also, another item I think that may affect us or maybe the licensees and this digital IDs. And I think I'll defer to. Assistant Ministerial like the cover that during the this imposition. Uh, as to as a substantive discussion on that.
Right, much to my surprise. So certainly the definition, the definition of. Draft year, which lowers the container size from seven gallons to five gallons and. Pegs the the gallonage tax rate. That one has been transmitted to the governor like today. A German is tomorrow, and I thought for sure. I I I I know when I was giving my presentation, I started to qualify it because I had not seen the. The CD one, and that is not passed out of. I mean, it was heard by in conference committee. But the CD one is not. We're gonna need to check again, but the CD one has not. Been published, so it this may be one that actually got all the way to hearing and conference committee and then died.
But but the question in terms of digital IDs. I mean, a few items like one, they're gonna come here, so that's kind of obvious. Sooner or later. The second one is that they're already valid for travel, right? And the third is, you know. Can we, if we want? Separately from the state, say that, you know, it's a valid form of ID for the purchase of alcohol if you. Anybody wants to go in and put in all of that infrastructure earlier, if you're a national chain and whatnot. Because it's as you pointed out, it's not easy. You're not taking a picture of your digital ID and just presenting it. You need a system that, you know, verifies that the. Digital ID is is valid across multiple states, so and ours is one that has done the implementation, so it seems like. It would be beneficial to allow people to adopt it early. If they want to.
Now, the the kind of the issue is that this specific bill. Speaks directly to confirmation of age.
Yes.
As opposed to. Identity when you're traveling and that is that I think is kind of maybe problematic. Because that has not been modified yet, and I I, you know, obviously at the beginning of my presentation, I was making an assumption that it would appear any second now. And keep on checking and it hasn't. So it actually may be one of the very latest bill deaths that I've experienced. Oh, yeah, absolutely. In fact, it will, and although we might have to wait a while because it'll come up at the conference committee level, so we'll have to go through the entire. Session to wait for that, but at least the groundwork will have been will have been laid.
How do you sit at the airport?
Because sometimes. Even those guys are having trouble with it.
Yeah, yes, the TSA, yeah, doesn't. I've never been able to get mine to go through.
Yeah.
They just asked me to hand hand over my physical.
Yeah.
Driver slides, because they you're 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 aiming it and it's not reading it.
Yeah.
Have a thing.
Sorry, most most people don't even have the real ID yet. This with the stuff.
I have it already, though, by this date.
Yeah, but I certainly did this year. I just don't know what.
It's over.
Sixty thousand.
Anything more need to discuss?
Not on that one. The the next one was. Was. You're right, the CD one hasn't come out. Direct to consumer, right, that that came very close, didn't make it out of its final hearing. The big island. Made a recommendation. We did not, right? And in terms of how we choose to make recommendations or not. On legislation, that was kind of the gist of what I wanted to get to. When I was looking at the hearings, they asked a number of questions which. Kind of rightly were the subject matter experts, but we weren't there. And and some of the items that came up, which I think was was very. Jermaine was, you know, we allow it for wine. And we assume that we're collecting taxes. We assume that the stuff is is not being left on the door for kids to grab at. We assume all of these things, but. Maybe we should. Be ready with an answer next year when this comes up. And so how do we, A, make a decision between us here and the administration there? But this is something that we would want to play in on and and on top of it, you know, having that type of. Information so that we can make an informed decision. It seems like a the best way to go. So I'm just kind of putting that out on the floor.
It's always difficult to take a position when. Different licensees are 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 involved on different sides of of the question. I, you know, I. I've always sort of believed that when it comes to that, and as soon as it really becomes a question. Of of those for or against to mobilize and speak to the benefits or a gap or. Or downfall, so of whatever. Whatever. Bill is is going through. I think I I think it's easy to make that. The assumption that, hey, let's go doing for wine and and. Why why not our liquor and beer? Obviously, there there are some concerns about that, and I think. The 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 question as to what what happened there, you know, really. I I I think that the the question of debate what was handled by 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 the by the appropriate. Interest, so to speak.
I I think it was the some of the appropriate interests gave voice in their testimony, right? But the subject matter expertise is in this wrong. Yeah, I I think that's what was lacking. I think for the legislators sitting sitting there trying to make a decision. They weren't sure whether or not. How well the the system for wine was working. I don't know that I know, so perhaps we should find out.
How's that research on the pros and cons of that and and to your point, the status of D to C for wine?
Right.
I mean, who who does that?
If it's not us. If it's not us, who is it, right?
But who in the administration would do that?
Oh, what? I'm sorry. What do you mean? I I think our investigators, I it's it's a function of are we collecting taxes? And are they paying their their taxes? Isn't that us?
No, it's it's dough tax because it's what they're paying is general excise tax.
Yeah.
So I guess it was. Two or three years ago, Administrator Paccaro introduced a bill that would require. Common carriers to. File information with us with the counties in terms of shipments that they were handing. Handling that were very specific to wine. It was a it was a pretty major fight. And right now, interestingly enough, the only common carrier that begrudgingly is filing those reports. Is FedEx Ground. UPS is never or, you know, DHL or whatever, they've they've never participated. Because unfortunately, like a lot of these these type of bills, there is no enforcement. Hammer to impose on common carriers. We're not like certain jurisdictions that. Physically license their comment carriers through the their, you know, the their liquor commissions. So I guess FedEx just decided to be the. The gallant one, and they said, well, we'll we'll give you the bulk data. You have to sort it yourself. They do file it in Excel, so it would be easy to sort. But it was it was kind of to me, it was a very begrudging kind of accommodation that they're making, so we get that monthly. But that's all they're gonna do is in terms of. They're gonna just do a data dump of wine shipments that they're handling that are going to. And just sort of eye following them quickly. At least they're just being delivered to. Residents and individuals and not to businesses because that they know that's not permitted under direct to consumer. But yeah, the the tax, the tax is 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 there's required to get that. Basic business, whatever that the basic business license and file general excise with dough tax, not us.
So basically, then what we're talking about right is direct to consumer is is not, I mean, honestly, the way I'm hearing it. Has nothing to do with us because the taxes somewhere else, they're shipping it from somewhere else to here. So we have no control at all over the item coming in.
Right.
Direct to consumer. Wine.
It's pretty limited.
So.
Without us.
So I guess my answer in a sense then would be.
We don't have a.
We don't. We would not be the item experts to answer that question for them.
But I think the other question, though, was the manufacturers. That are local are the ones that are the ones kind of pushing this. Right? And they are one sector of our licensees. And then the other ones that are not happy with it, right, are the distributors and some of the higher end retailers.
We're in the three tier system.
We have, do we have any? Wine makers or wine, yeah, wine bickers within Hawaii or within a while? That are doing direct to consumer sales, no, right?
No, we don't. We barely have like manuf- like winery.
Yeah, okay, no, I I guess what I'm trying to figure, right, is like guys that might be doing it here now because they're this. Are getting somewhat up on someone else who's trying to manufacture something. If they are doing that, right, because that would be a reason to say. Those other groups should have a right. To buy into that too, but if no one is actually. Making anything from it.
I I I think the logic is that if you want to expand. The ability of small manufacturers in Hawaii to be able to just ship with across islands, right? Is. Do we allow this?
Okay.
Right, and that that would enable them to.
Okay.
Have a have broader reach.
Well, wineries can, wineries can inter-island.
Yeah.
Because that's right, and and. I I think it's I put in my presentation that direct to consumer wiring bill was that was two thousand six. And that was a it replaced what was formerly called reciprocal shipping. And and I still rather it was limited to about seventeen states is that. You could have direct consumer shipping of winery provided that state. You know, if we if they permitted us to ship, we would have to print them to ship. It was like very, very, very loosely regulated. And when they switched to the direct to consumer. It was a pretty big battle. It was a difficult thing to get, and I remember members of the Wine Institute came down physically to. Work with legislators and lobbyists and the four county liquor commissions to get just the winery part in.
And then in a slightly different but similar vein, but it's. The last and modification, right? That nobody even wanted to hear.
Yeah, we I mean, we we're able to get it introduced two years in a row. It got assigned to an appropriate committee and just. Just lay there. We cannot get it to move.
But it's laying there and we have the opportunity.
It could be revived, right?
Who's on that committee? What or what committee was it?
It was.
CPC was one of them. I mean, it's kind of the standard. We'll have to have to go take a look at the.
CPC and then judiciary, but it didn't get to the first. It didn't get a hearing in the in its first.
Yeah, it's never been. It's never heard in two years. It's been introduced.
But that seems like a. Again, it it would enable our small manufacturers to, you know, got a. Fairs or whatever and. Which just seems to make sense. And so the the idea here was perhaps we should. If we want to weigh in on something or. Between the two of us, how would we? Come up with a procedure for doing it so it doesn't seem so adder. So those were the items that I wanted to bring up for discussion.
Please. If I could just go ahead and concur very quickly, in all the years of bill tracking I've done. The one hundred percent of the legislative testimony has been submitted by the. Director, Director Administrator of the counties. I have to presume that is being done with the commission approval. And I would say that's a pretty prudent model to follow. In in terms of, and there have been in in the past, there's been instruction given to administrators or directors in terms of. You know, providing testimony or support or opposition for for particular bills. It just has to be communicated to the. To the administrator. If you want to do that as a commission as a whole, it would have to be agendized. And and.
You guys can't do anything individually.
That's what I meant. So it seems like we should.
The agenda is the issue. Then you guys will have to discuss it and open, open it up for public testimony. And then discuss and vote on it, and it would be, you could have it direct, the general, like direct the agency or the director to write a letter. And give the gist. And what, you know, whether it's position statement. For or against. For information only. But it have to go through the process, but I would just. Caution. That you guys might then be lobbied, especially if it's a topic where you have licensees pitted against each other. So just a and then, of course, you can obviously testify on your own behalf on a personal on your own. Personal basis. But. That would be the process.
Yeah.
I mean, you could do a pig, but that seems long. It's not very efficient. So it would have to be. Contemporary is along with the. With the. The bills, but also give the administration enough time to draft and get it in in time.
And that and that's why I'm asking now. We have vision as some of the bills that. Going to be. Up for next year. We should kind of, and I think what you're saying is. Do we want to agendize something like the class? Do we want to agendize something like the class ten bill to direct? The administration to go in and ask for a hearing.
So is there anything that prohibits or prevents commission members? And or the chair from approaching any of legislative committees, for example, going to roads?
Yeah, not in. It still gets slippery.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm trying to understand, because on the state level, we operate differently. And I'm I'm trying to grab, get a handle on this city and county level. Because if there's a certain bill or resolution that comes up within the ledge. I myself and or the administrator are free to approach any. Head or committee member on a senate or house committee and have a frank discussion. On on the matter, especially looking at intent, yeah.
As a liquor commission, you guys cannot do anything without a vote from each other.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
But 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 here's a scenario, right, like let's take the fast step one, we could vote to say we would direct the administrator to. Way in in favor of this bill, right? As a commission, and so that's our our position as the commission and and to the administration, but we. Only one or two of us could go with the administrator to go visit. The chair of the of a legislative committee.
But, okay, so so I get I get the the gist of it, but I guess my question would be. As a commission ourselves, we should be. At this point, pro, anything that would help any type of individual licensee. Right, and so we should, i- if you see, if there is a bill out there to help an individual licensee. We already should be wanting to help each type of licensee, we shouldn't have to. I I'm just saying, we shouldn't have to agendaize it to put it out there to say, go do this, because we already want to help all the licensees. The administration should be open to looking if that's going to help that licensee already, and then take a position. We want to help those licensees and give testimony to support that help.
But personally, like the class, the direct to consumer. Uh Big Island came out and testified in support, and we did not have a position and. Should we, and what would be the process for us making a position?
Right, no, I get I get that direct to consumer is the question that someone came out pro. We did not, we stayed quiet.
And and it and it pits our communities against each other.
It does, but then on the other end, right? In my own opinion, is my, just my personal opinion. The direct to consumer doesn't have anything to do with us because we get no valid. Tax or anything of what's happening currently. Now, maybe the small consumers or small businesses.
Manufacturers.
Ma- small craft manufacturers want something like that, they then should be. Contacting their legislators and saying that, and maybe even sending. Notifications to the liquor commission saying, I as a small craft person, support this. And maybe the administration then forwards those. To whoever they need to, I'm just stating that for me, we should be all pro to whatever would help a licensee currently. What we have.
Yes.
But I'm I'm not pro to be out there saying we should be pro to or in support of something that we may not. Currently benefit from or be part of. Anything to come and say anything about, because. If if right now, direct to consumer liquor or wine were to get picked up by a child. Who would then be violated in a violation and who would be adjudicated here by this commission? No one, I don't think.
I don't know.
So but but we would have no context for that, so I'm just talking in a sense of. We we support our licensees, and if the ten class ten thing is a support, then. I think we have to make a blanket statement that if if legislation is out there that supports our licensees as a commission. We should have the administration automatically support that. But I don't think we should in a sense, only because we have to be a governing body of everything else that happens.
I I I agree with that, I. I don't know why we would not think that the administration would not already support it, that we have to come and say, sell, administration support it.
Yeah.
Right, I think we're all on the same page of wanting to support licensees.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing this.
Right, right, so I I I don't feel that's necessary, frankly.
No, but this is, but the but the direct to consumer, small batch manufacturer, right, is is the better case.
But 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 why put ourselves out there that could hit controversial topics within the community?
Okay. The one way that we have uh addresses in the past um. Is uh for one thing, every time we've been asked to provide testimony by a legislator, we have put it, we have put in there. And so sometimes we'll have to say um for bills that have a very overt uh commercial benefit to. A very specific class of license, it's very difficult for us to say uh uh strong in support. Because we know there are other classes of licensees that may not be in favor of that, so what we'll say is that we could uh will be happy to provide comments. And so we will uh do the best in a in a short format to do the pros and cons. Of what would have or intended consequences and unintended con- consequences and put that on.
That makes total sense to me.
Yeah.
Be able to share those views.
Yeah, I mean, it should be both, right, because we're gonna affect one license in one way, and we're gonna affect another license in another way. They're the two pitting against each other, realistically.
Yeah.
So last session, we did put um testimony uh providing comments. Uh this one, we we did not, it was, this is a kind of a peculiar um. Session because as I think I I I I. Horst out, there are um eight bills that were very specific to small craft producer pubs. And then additional four plus two, I mean, it was it was so heavily weighted for a very discreet class of licensees, they didn't ask for our help, by the way.
Hmm.
In terms of, could you comment on, and there may be a reason. Why they didn't want, they didn't ask for us to provide uh comment.
Yeah, by taking no position and just providing comments, you're educating everybody on record.
Yes, yeah. And if that's what the commission would like us to do more proactively, then we're finding that out now as opposed to. Just kind of um.
Waiting to be asked.
Or or you know, like doing that.
I mean, I guess, I guess I think we should be doing that, but what what was just stated, the proactiveness, but I do think, right, obviously, if a. A specific group of licensees, right, come back and basically don't even ask for help, maybe. We just do the minimum, right, because maybe they have their own reasons for not wanting us to help them, I don't know, but. Yeah. But again, right, I think we should. Do what we've done in the past in the sense of being what we were just talking about.
I agree.
For sure, when a legislator asks us to comment, we we do.
Yeah, yeah.
And but not all of them, not all of them do.
Yeah. So they don't want to have the notification that liquor is supporting.
Chair, are we good on this?
But yeah, no.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, um next item. Liquor administrators.
Deputy Commissioner Sal Patillos, Administrator of Honolulu Liquor Commission, um as you all know, we had the uh symposium. Uh the first time in six years, I believe. And I'd just like to thank uh um. A lot of the staff that helped now, and I just wanna. I I just wanna identify them for you and let you let you know who they were. Uh I'd like to thank Denise Baja, Calvin Shaw, Ali Hiryama, Doug O. And Darren Matsumoto for essentially putting the 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 entire symposium together. And also let's thank Assistant Administrator Rai. For the content that she provided in terms of the uh the legislative update. Also, Daniel Sato, Stacy Jiang, and Glenn Shigata. For uh for manning the the tables, the table's in the corner, right?
And as her model of the body worn camera.
Especially Glenn modeling the body worn camera in uniform. Uh although I was I was disappointed that he did not have a catwalk strut, anyway, uh. I I just like to thank them, because I I think I, a- after, after a lot of people left, I I just looked in the corner. And there there were lines, there are people asking, asking, asking in questions about. About things, I don't see. Uh so I think that was, that was really helpful, um. In terms of operations, I think I'd like to know that today, uh a record management analyst uh joined us. Uh that's uh uh she comes from Washington State as government, as as government uh experience. Uh and I think the important thing about that is that that position has been working for a while. And and it's good to have somebody. Uh additionally. Uh we interviewed another individual for uh for lessons in control of this little one. Uh and I think is uh the candidate was very well thought up, and we'll see what happens. And I think in uh we have a few rewind the pipeline, uh as we, as we try to hire more people. Um and finally, I think uh. Yesterday. Last week, I I was able to present on on uh essentially what what I I term invol- involuntary recalls of of. Of complications that have not moved for a while. And we're we're working through, we're we're working through the process of that now, I don't, you know. Trying to figure out how we're going to word the 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 letters and so on and so forth. Uh but also, uh one thing that I figured, I didn't, I was not able to speak on. Was the uh the use of uh of of internal developer. Uh randomized inspection app, uh and I I'd like to speak about that now, uh Doug, if you don't mind. So thi- this this mind blurring. Mind blurring uh table is essentially a uh. Uh a summary of what's happened in the first quarter of calendar year twenty twenty five, so January, February, and March. And on the left hand side, you'll see the SIP codes, the number of licenses within that SIP code. And the total inspection so far in in the in the in the quarter, in the quarter. And you can see that every SIP code has been visited, uh some more so than others. But I think you're beginning to see, uh you know, uh an attempt to try to uh uh. Inspect throughout the throughout the county, uh throughout the city and county of Honolulu. And then uh uh we spoke about this as well, uh and I I think the important thing, one of the things that we noticed first when when we when we first did this, and I think. I advise you is that what we found was that uh our our. The previous way we could, we 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 gathered data, we basically said, you know, uh. We we said, oh, five people went to this particular locations, so five inspections, so. So we're now looking at this, the inspection itself, for licensing as opposed to per investor. So you look at the 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 breakdowns with normal investigations versus versus a complaint. Warning follow ups and so on, and you see that the bulk of the inspections are 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 uh. Our general investigations, ninety point three four percent of, you know, uh and 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 so on down the line. But what we're also finding is that um. We probably do need to be a little bit more granular in in what we're looking at, uh because if you. I I don't know if you know these, but you know, there there are the after hour inspections, and that's considered a co and core normal inspection. So uh we we need to decide how we're gonna define things a little bit more specifically, I think. And 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 then uh Doug, if you don't mind going back to the to the list, uh. I think it's a, it's the last slide. Yeah, these these are just the months that I put together. Um. Yeah, so you you'll see here, you know, the descriptions, I I think uh one of the things that we need to do is probably uh figure out how how to define these things better. Uh I think the the one thing that 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 surprised me was there were some not specified and another miscellaneous uh. That seems like it should be one and the same.
Right.
Uh but, you know, but we avoid some of that by 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 identifying things more, you know, in a more granular. In a more granular way, and so I think uh Doug has been working with with enforcement. And looking at these things and seeing how we're gonna define them and so on, and hopefully that that this will also um. Inform what we do once we get to the uh the. The random inspection app that that's going to be developed. Uh so I just wanted to show you that and what what we're learning in terms of the of the of what we're seeing. Uh and also, I think there was a thing about complaints, uh and uh the thing about complaints is that. Uh. Not every complaint will be investigated, because let me let me give you an example, uh what. At one point in time, uh. Uh the, in in one weekend, I think, we got uh. Three or four complaints about a specific instance. The same thing, same issue. Uh but those came and and they came hard on each other or. You know, a day after one another over the weekend and so on, and so uh essentially the the. Uh it's essentially instead of investing each and every one of those complaints, the team investigated one complaint of those. There, but if you need to see, but it's what's available in data, but it you need to go look for it. It's the fact that there were four complaints involved in that one inspection. So just so that's just so you know that it, you know, the concern here is that sometimes uh, you know, uh. Inspections may be skewed simply because, you know, uh.
Complaint.
Yeah, so I think, I think it.
Inspection.
I think there there may be no easy way to respond to that, but other than go look at what's behind the. What's behind that one inspection, so. Uh so those are the things that we're learning, and hopefully these are the things that will help us. Uh in inform the the process or or the development of of the of the of the randomization app. And on that note, I don't know if I told everyone yet, but uh I believe. Uh notice proceed was provided, uh I think uh. I think that has been uh signed by both parties and is now in the hands of the. Uh of the uh of the vendor. And hopefully we can begin the process of data migration, developing the apps. Uh uh taking care of the phase six enhancements and so on, uh soon.
Right. So I wanted to say I was very happy and and appreciative of all you and the efforts of the staff at the symposium. Like I went really well and it's well done, so. Um thank you very much for putting all of that together.
Well, there have been some anecdotal comments about uh about how people enjoyed it. What I'm hoping for is that we're able to be uh tap into the licensing uh. Community more and see what what areas of interest there are for them. Uh you know, so it's not so much just agency driven, but also given by by the concerns that they have. Uh and we're hoping that, you know, we we get to the point of having the same. Number of people attending as as did prior to to the hiatus, you know. Uh so that that's our hope, and hopefully it it works out.
And how it goes the body worn camera pilot?
The body worn camera pilot is a bit on hold, uh. Yeah, so yeah, we received uh. Letters from H G A, uh and. We additionally contacted them sometime in December, provided for. Uh a a date, and they never said anything closely, we we the consultation that said. Uh receive uh receive counsel uh of a letter like uh with last week. And we're trying to reply to that, and we 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 just put things on hold to make sure that. You know, there is substantive concentration that happens uh before you move. Uh I know people want to get this done, but we also, you know, we also want to get that in a manner that has uh that has involvement of. Or or at least a substantive concentration which.
But we have the devices, if you want to go see them and check them out.
And you have the devices.
Maybe just a quick comment uh on on the data presented, I think it's good, I think we are capturing a lot of information and. Thank you for kind of walking us through that, I get it, there there's some noise in there as you're um analyzing it further. Uh and it'd be great to continue to provide that to the commission. Or review, I think for for me personally, again, that I'd like to know, like, are we making progress? Or how do I look at that and know if it's good or bad? You know, it it's just a lot of things to look at, so I don't have.
Yeah, and and the difficult part is you're you're talking about inspections, right, and and you can't really say my metric is X inspections, because it's like. I I guess we could say, you know, try to visit everyone like a certain number of times per year or not routine inspection times per year. Uh and and it's difficult to say that, you you know, my my metric is going to be not only that, but also. More importantly, the number of citations or, you know, these seven generate, right, it just seems, that's not something that.
No.
But but yeah, we need to look at it and see, you know, uh I I. But but yeah, we need to look at it and see, you know, uh I I guess look at it in a way that. The and and see if it tells us if we're being effective. Uh and and that's gonna be the, that's gonna be the really difficult part, so it's 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 deciding on on how we're going to. Uh decide how if we are being effective, the efficacy.
I agree on the difficulty, but necessary. Otherwise, we're doing a lot of work, not knowing why we're doing. This was born out of a concern that came out of uh the the system review, so it it started with an issue. And so here we are today, as a commissioner, looking, I would want to know, is it better than it was before because of what we're doing? That's that's really what I'm looking at.
But I think that, you know, uh you know, uh I think the 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 concerns. Not everybody was uh was at the trial, uh and and so I think. Once we get to the point of getting to the to the more granular aspects and trying to ensure that. Uh the use of randomization uh app app to 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 uh to essentially schedule inspections. That's right. I I think that's that's gonna take away a lot of the issues that 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 were brought up. In 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 the in the in the scum at least, in the scum complaint. Instead, we're going to be able to see that there won't be this thing anymore of uh. Uh hyperbole on my part, I'm gonna say this, but you know, fifty percent of your inspections took place in Chinatown.
Right, right.
You know, you know, everything else was scattered. Why could he had a nine percent? Uh but but you 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 begin to avoid that uh. At least that that kind of conclusion just based on gross numbers, right? It's it's not, you you, and then, you know, and then we can probably look into, like I said. We can look and see whether or not it's backed up or whether or not we're we're skewing numbers somehow, uh but.
Now, we're collecting the data to justify what actions that we're taking, so.
I mean, we're trying to get to an outcome.
And and if we're able to say, hey, you know, randomly speaking, we we, you know, based on the on the random gener, we were able to speak. At least visit everyone.
Right.
And and we visited, we had, we had at least nor- uh regular. Regular inspe- normal, normal slash regular inspections uh. Three or four times for each of you guys, then I think that the the concern about us being selective. Goes away.
I just think if if you can show that the list of places you were given to go to.
Right.
Was all generated by a computer and all I did was say, choose twenty. You take away the whole oper- objectiveness of saying, well, you're making a choice to hang out in that area because that's an easy area to be in.
And so I will make this commitment to you and I hope the other commissioners will as well. We can try out our new fancy shirts by going on a ride along when uh when we have these uh cameras deployed to see how they look.
Glenn, get ready.
And we're gonna, we're gonna sample the shirts with you and walk on out there.
All right, any other questions?
Or or do you want anything specific uh put on next week's agenda?
No, I don't have anything. Okay. All right, next agenda item. Announcement, any announcement?